The Lord is Elohim, the everlasting God. He is Yahweh Shalom, the Lord who is our peace. He is Jehovah's Son, the Lord of righteousness. And he is Jehovah's Shama, the ever-present hope.
Adonai, you are the sovereign one. Zevahot, the captain of the host. Elohim, creator of the universe. The ever-present hope. Shalom, the Lord who is our peace. The Lord who is our healer, peace, healers.
Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. While I live, I will praise the Lord. I will sing praises to my God while I have my being. I pray that you have had thus far a blessed week and I pray that you are ready for tonight, Wednesday night Word Booths. We are honored tonight, people of God. God is going to do something mighty. We have a tremendous man of God that is going to be in our midst on tonight. I cannot wait to bring him to the platform. But before we do, family, y'all know what we need to do. I need you to hit that share button. For those of you that are tuning in, this may be your first time. My name is Pastor Kevin Matthews, the senior pastor of the Shepherd's House International Christian Church, where we are caring for people, quipping people for destiny, and preparing people for eternity. I greet you tonight in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and so honored that you have scrolled through or your notifications may have turned, went off, and you decided to tune us in on tonight. We bless you in the name of Jesus Christ. Listen, if you're coming on the platform and you are not following us, if you have not subscribed to this channel, I want to encourage you to do so because you're going to get nothing but the good news of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. So go on and hit that share button, hit that like button, do it right now. And for our church family, God bless you. This is going to be an exciting weekend for us as this coming Sunday in our morning worship is going to be our Friends and Family Day. We want you to invite those that are unchurched, those that are unsaved, those that may be looking for a church home, those that need a touch from God. Bring them with you on this Sunday. It is going to be a wonderful time in Zion. I have a word from the Lord that will again encourage and lift their hearts and hopefully bring them into a deeper, more intimate relationship with the Lord Jesus. And then this coming Sunday evening at four o'clock, we're going to be ordaining and licensing our members. We have fifty-eight, twenty-one deacons and fifty, no, thirty-six, yeah, thirty-six ministers that's going to be licensed to go forth and to spread this gospel that God has called us to. And man, we're excited about that as we're seeing God move in the lives of people as they consecrate and separate theirselves unto God for to be used by the master. So please make sure that you join us either live or in person this coming Sunday for either one of those worship experiences. It's going to be stellar. God bless you, God bless you. Listen, as you're coming on, I see the family rolling in. Sister Prince, God bless you. Sister Sheena, God bless you. God bless you, Deacon Sheena. Sister Brown, God bless you. Come on in. Again, hit that share button. I'm going to open up in a word of prayer. We're going to have a short time of worship. And then David Marshall, who is the leader of our social justice ministry, is going to introduce our special guest. And we're going to jump right into tonight's topic. Man, I'm so, so excited to deal with this subject that we're going to be dealing with tonight. The Bible is a call to social justice. A Bible is a call to social justice. And I'm gonna tell you something right now, we got a theologian here tonight. We got a tremendous man of God that again is, God is using all over this country and around the world in such a marvelous way. And so you're going to get to hear him on tonight, and I'm telling you, you're just going to be blessed. So listen, let's, let's look to the Lord. We're going to open up and set the atmosphere for God's presence. And then we're going to jump right into the discussion. Father, we do thank you and we give you praise. We give you glory. We give you honor. We ask though God right now that you would be exalted and lifted up. We declare that Jesus Christ is our King. And we ask though God right now that you would be in our discussion, touch the lives and change, my God, the perspectives and mindsets of people tonight through our discussion. We give you all the praise, all the glory and all the honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Let the people of God say amen, amen, and amen. Come on, let me see some amens in the chat. As well as again, make sure you hit that share button, but let's worship the King of Kings. I know some of y'all know this song. I need y'all to help me sing it tonight. Come on, clap your hands wherever y'all. Listen. Tragedies are commonplace, all kinds of diseases, people are slipping away. Economy's down, people can't get enough pay. But as for me, all I can say is, thank you, Lord, for all you've done for me. Oh, I'm so grateful, Lord. Yeah. Folks without homes who are in the streets and the drug habits, some say they just can't feed. Muggers and robbers, no place seems to be safer. But you've been my protection every step of the way. Thank you, Lord, for all you've done for me. Yeah. It could have been me out there with no food and no clothes. All left alone, without a friend, or just another number with a tragic end. But you didn't see it, so let any of these things be. And every day by your power, you keep on keeping me. Hey, thank you, Lord, for all you've done for me. Hey, it could have been me out there with no food and no clothes. All left alone, without a friend, or just another number with a tragic end. But you didn't see it, so let any of these things be. Every day by your power, you keep on keeping me. Everybody say, thank you, Lord, for all you've done for me. Thank you, Lord. Sing it one more time. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Lord, for all you've done. I want to thank you for your love. Thank you. Thank you for your power. Thank you. Thank you for protection. Thank you. Every hour. Say, I want to thank you for your love. Thank you. Thank you for your power. Thank you. Thank you for protection. Thank you. Every hour. One more time, I want to thank you for your love. Thank you. Thank you for your power. Thank you. Thank you for protection. Thank you. Every hour. One more time, I want to thank you for your love. Thank you. Thank you for your power. Thank you. Thank you for protection. Every hour. Every hour. Can I say it, y'all? I want to thank you for your love. Thank you for your power. Thank you for protection. Every hour. I want to thank you for your love. Thank you for your power. Hey, thank you for protection. Every hour. I want to thank you for your love. Thank you for your power. Thank you for protection. Every hour. I want to thank you for your love. Thank you for your strong power. Thank you for protection. Hey, every hour. Thank you for keeping me. Thank you for loving me. Thank you for saving me. I want to say thank you. Thank you for turning my life around. You turned my life around. You turned my life around. You turned my life around. Thank you for healing my heart. Thank you for keeping my mind. Thank you for touching my body. Thank you for redeeming the soul. I want to thank you for my family. Hey, thank you for my loved ones. Thank you for everything you've done for me. Say thank you. I want to thank you for your love. Thank you. Thank you for your power. Thank you. Thank you for protection. Thank you. Every hour. I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your love. Thank you. Thank you for your power. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you for protection. Thank you, Jesus. One more time, I want to thank you for your love. Thank you. Thank you for your power. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you for protection. Thank you, Jesus. Every hour. I want to thank you for your love. Thank you for your love. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you for your love. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you for protection. Say every hour. Every hour. And everybody say, thank you, Lord, for all you've done for me. Come on, somebody lift your voice and say. Thank you, Lord, for all you've done. From the bottom of your heart, lift up your voice and say. Thank you, Lord, for all you've done for me. Somebody give God a thank you. Thank you, Lord, for all that you have done for me. I pray that that is your heart cry, that you are giving the Lord thanks for all that he has done for you. I want to thank all of you so far for tuning in, but listen, if you haven't, hit that share button, hit that share button, hit that like button. What's up, Kateri? God bless you. Minister Percy, God bless you. I see the family starting to roll on in. Y'all get, let's get online. Sister Regina, God bless you. God bless you. God bless you. Sister Cynthia, God bless you. Minister Laverne, God bless you. Come on in here, family. Sister Danae, listen, hit that share button. Get on the telephone, send out a text, let somebody know that we are on tonight and let's give God praise. Sister Ella, God bless you. Sister Jackson, God bless you. God bless you. God bless you. Tonight, we are honored to have a wonderful man of God that is going to again dialogue with us, open up the word of God and open up our minds, our hearts and our spirits to this critical, important topic, especially during this time as we are embarking upon and getting prepared for the midterm elections, which is taking place November the eighth. Please make sure that you have your plan together to go out and vote, whether you're going to do in person, whether you're going to mail it in, whatever you have selected, you're going to stand in line. Listen, make sure you have your plan together because this is very critical. I believe that what's going to take place is probably going to set the course and the direction of our nation for years to come. And so it's important that we know the issues, understand the issues and get out there and exercise this right that God has given us. I want to thank David Marshall and our entire social justice ministry for setting this up tonight. They have been doing such an outstanding job. My heart is just overjoyed at the progress and at the steps that this ministry has taken to keep us constantly aware of issues that are going on in our community as well as us as a nation and how it affects us and then what we can do about it so that we can take action. It's so critical that we take action. So David is going to introduce our special guest on tonight. And then once he do that, man, we're going to jump right into this topic. David?
Tonight, our guest is Dr. Anubis Harris, who is the founder, president, dean of the Urban Renewal Center in Norfolk, Virginia. As a leader of URC, he leads the community engagement team that addresses initiatives which intersects with faith, justice, and community development. The fundamental pieces of Dr. Harris's work involves building community coalitions between unlikely partners which crosses racial, gender, class, denomination, as well as religious boundaries. Dr. Harris is the former founder, president, and dean of Jake's Divinity School, while also serving on the pastoral staff at the Parx House in Dallas, Texas. He is a public theologian, having also served on the faculty at Sacred Heart University, New York Theological Seminary, Fuller Theological Seminary, Vanguard University, and Regent University. Dr. Harris currently serves as part-time professor of Religious Studies at Old Dominion University. In his studies of ministry, Dr. Harris ordained minister, a theological educator, author, motivational speaker, and musician. He is the sought-after speaker on topics related to leadership, community involvement, theology, biblical studies, and social justice. Dr. Harris, we welcome you tonight to the Shepherd's House.
I am deeply honored. Thank you so much for the opportunity, your generous introduction. Thank you Pastor Matthews for inviting me. I'm so honored.
Man, thank you, brother. I, I, listen, I want you to relax tonight. We're going to have a good time. But I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for being with us on tonight. You are a tremendous man of God. And I thank God for all that you have accomplished and all that you have yet to accomplish because you still a young man. And so it only speaks to the fact that still your, your greater days, your best days are still yet ahead of you. But listen, the Bible says in Songs 106, verse three, it says, blessed are those who keep justice. Or the English version says, blessed are those who observe justice, who do righteousness all the time. And so tonight, we, we're going to, I, I want to dive into this. Is, is there relevance in the Bible as it pertains to social justice? Is the Bible called a social justice? Because you once wrote that Christianity is about social justice. Therefore, why is it important for us to know the scriptures as it pertains to social justice, as it pertains to, you know, defending the poor, the oppressed, the fatherless, the widows? How does the word of God apply to this and for us as believers today?
Great question, and thank you for the question. As you pointed out in scripture, from the beginning of the Hebrew Bible and throughout the Hebrew Bible, there are two bedfellows that are consistent theme, and that is righteousness and justice. If you look at the, the reason for the Babylonian captivity, Jeremiah prophesied about righteousness and justice. The key piece is, he said shoo, 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 which is Hebrew word for repent, reprint, repent. Because of the injustice done to the fatherless and the widows, that's social justice. And for their sexual impropriety, that's righteousness. So righteousness and justice were the bedfellows that led, the validation of the two led to Babylonian captivity. And then the third piece was idols. And then in the New Testament, when Jesus talks about the next, this, you know, the paradise, the one thing that he says is, I'm going to have the goats on one side and the sheep on the other and the ones who were fed, those who were hungry, those in prison, seven, seven things he said. Those that were clothed, those without homes, all that. He said, those who attended to those folks' social needs, I'm going to say into you into the joy of our Lord. So what's interesting is that people somehow don't seem to think that the Bible is about justice. And then, and then there are those who say, you know, well, let's not call it social justice, biblical justice. Well, I mean, there is no justice that is not social. It has to be social. Because social justice grounds justice within the social experience of humanity and it is about how we treat each other. If you look at the paradigmatic emblem of the cross, it's a vertical and a horizontal. The vertical has to do with relationship with God, the righteousness, and the horizontal is a symbol of human equality all the way across. That's social justice. So the very core of our faith is about righteousness and justice, and you can't separate the two.
Oh, so eloquently said, so eloquently said. Thank you so much. You, do, do you feel that most Christians understand our dual citizenship? The fact that we're citizens of the kingdom as well as we are citizens of this world, citizens of the United States? Do, do, do you think they really grasp that? Because you talked about that horizontal and vertical aspect of the cross.
Yeah, you know, historically, especially evangelical world, that was a, a desire to escape. And escapism became a prominent theological paradigm for, for getting saved. Get saved so I can go to heaven. If you die today, will you go to heaven? So the, you know, no, I'm not going to heaven. So you get saved so you can go to heaven. But the reality is, we get saved so we can live in this world. That's the reason for salvation is so we can live in this world. And how we live in this world as social beings have everything to do with the world that is to come. So the, so it's the already and not yet, the realized eschatology, right? That's what the Holy Spirit, we receive the Holy Spirit to bear witness in the world. As soon as after Acts two, what happened? Everything was about social engagement. There were two, there were two people who fell dead because they attended to social justice.
Wow.
Attend to the people's need. They were supposed to sell their goods and bring the goods to the apostles' feet to be distributed, right?
That's right, that's right.
Justice, so among those who are in need. So they had all things in common. Why? Not so they can all escape and go to heaven, but to improve the quality of life on earth. And in another piece, if I'd say this, in Acts two, I love to talk about this. Acts two, they get the Holy Spirit, the Galatians, the episode, however we define that. And then Acts three is when Peter and John are going up to the temple at the third hour of, of the day for prayer. And this is not something new that they did. They did all the time. Jews did it all the time, every day. They went to the temple to pray. But this time, they saw something they have already seen, right? Nothing new about the disenfranchised sitting at the gate called Beautiful, especially those with some sort of physical ailment because they couldn't go into the temple because the law wouldn't allow. So this was not new, but something about this time that defined the experience differently than the previous times. And I offer this life for people to read Acts two and Acts three together because whatever happened in Acts two defined the way that the disciples engaged this man in Acts three. So they couldn't attend to their righteous duty of prayer and ignore the social impediment that was at the gate called Beautiful. They stared at it. And they didn't have silver and gold, but they said, such we have given to you and lifted him up in the name of Jesus. That was an act of social justice because the man had a physical impediment, an economic impediment. That's why he was begging for money. And he had a sociological impediment. He was, that was part of the way they attended to those with, with the social challenges. Let him sit there and beg. Well, he gave them, they gave the man the hand up. Social justice is about giving people a hand up, not empowering poverty, but giving people a hand up to equal footing with other humanity. And that's what social justice is all about. How do we bear witness with the Holy Spirit in a world that has many inequalities to affirm the humanity of all people equally? That's a holy thing to do.
Wow, wow, wow. That's so powerful because it's not a handout, but it's a hand up.
No, yeah.
Hand up, hand up in that particular way. You know, it's interesting that you say that because and when I think back to my development and understanding of scripture, I, I came to that conclusion as well. Because when you grow up in a Pentecostal setting, the, the whole aim and goal is to make it to heaven. And, and everything is about getting there in that particular way. And it's almost as if the, the life that you live down here is just, is just a fog because we're trying to get to heaven. And then as you go through scripture, you start to realize that, you know what? When you really grasp that life is but a vapor, smoke is here today and is gone tomorrow, that the essence of life is not necessarily about salvation as much as it is discovering what God has called you to do and fulfill that and walk it out so that you can hear at the end the words, well done, my good and faithful servant. So it requires us to really tap into this whole element of righteousness and justice so that we can really understand. Why, why is it then that the church seems to have, especially across certain sectors? Because and, and we're hearing in the media, we, we got, we got polar opposite perspectives when it comes to this particular issue. What is our role as ambassadors of the kingdom of God and how do we find balance?
I think our goal is to bear witness to Christ in the world. And what of the, one of the challenges, especially in the evangelical Pentecostal world, is our mission has been hijacked by party politics.
Oh, my goodness.
Redefined by political theory, and that's problematic. People ask questions like, are you pro-choice or pro-life? And that becomes the definer as to whether they determine you're a Christian or not. But the fallacy with that is the meaning of those two is, is, is defined by party politics and not by theology. And so now party politics is leading the discourse on righteousness when, when our, our faith in the Lord Jesus Christ and principles that are Christ-driven should lead our, our discourse. And the reason I say that is because while we, there is room for party politics in the world, it is not defined by Christ, neither side. So then when we say pro-life, it's not truly the life that Jesus is talking about. And when you say pro-choice, it's not truly the choice that we have in Christ. So you use this language that amasses itself as righteous language when it's really defined by party politics that is at its root, in many cases, defile on both sides.
Oh, my goodness. You said a mouthful right there, and I think that is probably, probably the, 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 I mean, you just hit it on the head as far as what the issue is because so many people look at it that way. And you judge that way based upon that one issue. Why is that one issue so prevailing in the church today?
Because it was designed to be a manipulation of the people of faith. This current discourse is a byproduct of an intentionality to get the people of faith to, to, to sway. to get the people of faith to, to, to sway the vote. And this happened, as you know, in the late eighties, early nineties, when faith was used as a weapon, or where, where, I should say, as a way to manipulate people's vote. And to, you know, force a group of people to vote one way is to bootstrap it to faith discourse. And to be honest with you, neither side, and since we're on this subject, is really about any babies to start with. This is a, who, this is about power and control. That's what.
Wow.
And it's a shame that the church would be so manipulated for so long. And either side, this is not a statement for either side. This is about the difference between what party politics has become and the way it is manipulating the mind of the faithful to, and splitting the church. I've seen on Twitter, even though, even though it's today, where even pastors and, and evangelists, national evangelists, or casting shadow on other pastors, if they take a picture with a particular politician that they disagree with to try to paint them as some demonic figure for taking a picture. That's demonic. That's, that's demonic. I'm sorry to say, well, that's, that's, that's crazy. If you take a picture with a person who you, you know, I mean, when do we decide a person's politics because they took a picture with somebody? I remember, I took a picture with, with a politician, people was like, well, I don't know. I was like, that's a human being. I don't take a picture to say I agree with everything you have about. I take a picture because you're a human being. Now, I know how these things work, and you know how these things work. People do use pictures to try to push their agenda. But as people of faith, we can't allow ourselves to only shake hands with people who we agree with politically. I mean, what, what, what happened to our society?
Well, that's an interesting question that I took away. I think you, you're right that people are being demonized and depending upon what side of the spectrum that you're on in this particular way. Why is it that you feel, or maybe what, what's going on with us today that we probably don't see or feel that God is a God of diversity? I think that we, we have this one dimensional focus as it pertains to how God operates and how God functions. Why, why, why is it that we have that, 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 that he, that he's not a God of diversity? There's no two fingerprints that are alike, there're no two people who are alike. But some kind of way, we, we got this thing that he's not. He's not a God of diversity.
I, I think the, the part of righteousness, because God created our human, the kaleidoscope of human diversity. And that diversity, and it is working in other things that they imagine they do, they can do it as long as they're working together. The problem is they were working together for themselves, to bring themselves a name rather than to bring God a name. And I think Pentecost is about working together as people of diversity, diverse languages, the speaking in tongues. So, you know, why would God divide the language at Pentecost? That's exactly what God did at, at the Tower of Babel, right? But he didn't give them the gift of interpretation at Tower of Babel because he wanted to stop the work because they were making a name for themselves. But at Pentecost, he gave them the gift of interpretation because he wanted to divide the language to affirm the diversity, but accentuate the power of the Holy Spirit and bring unity and diversity. And that unity is understanding. And so what I think that happens is that we, by creation, become tribal. But the tribalness should be brought together for unity and diversity. And the enemy knows if we comes, if we come together to give glory to God, there's nothing we can't imagine that won't happen. So then he brings all this confusion so that our diversity would become division rather than diversity become unification. So I think that it's a, that's a spiritual response to your question. But I think it's really true. We got to, the reason why we can't work together because God has a kingdom agenda that can be accomplished through our diversity. And it's the devil that's bringing this, this, this destructive division.
Do, do you think it's because there's a misunderstanding of the Holy Spirit today? In, in that particular way that, which again is when we look at some aspects denominationally, the third person of, of, of the Godhead is what somewhat divides us in, in our theology and, and some aspects of our misinterpretation or lack of understanding in, in seeking out His ministry and His role has, has caused some of these issues to permeate throughout the church?
I do, I do think that the misunderstanding of the Holy Spirit, I mean, as Pentecostals, I was born and raised Pentecostal. And as Pentecostal, we believe in the power of the Holy Spirit. And we think, and at least in my formation or early formation, we saw the, the power of the Spirit as an energy expression and empowerment, speaking tongues to, you know, and if you don't speak in tongues, you don't have it. So then.
We went to the same church.
It's the funeral that causes us to run around the church and all this. And I remember growing up thinking, can the Holy Spirit do anything about this poverty in our neighborhood? I remember thinking about, thinking now, we can run around church and have church all day long. And can the Holy Spirit make people happy, you know, after they leave the church? I mean, I would have just a simple mind just saying, if the Holy Spirit can do all this in church and keep us in church all day long, can the Holy Spirit do something about all this pain and agony in our community? Those, that, that were, those were the questions that drove my whole theological career to try to understand pneumatology. And what is the role of the Spirit beyond an experience on Sunday? And people can't get along, people not happy, people can't, you know, confusion. What about we, we pass by all these homeless people to go down there to have a church service on Sunday? We pass by all these people in pain and we go into heaven and nobody else is going. And, and I was just thought, can the Spirit do something? You know, not to negate my experience with, as a Pentecostal, but is there anything else the Spirit can do? And the older I got, the more deeply I reflected on that question, to the point where church almost became boring for me. It's like, we just doing the same thing over and over. You know? And then it wasn't until I was in seminary and I was assigned, I was in the, at, at Keller School of Theology in Atlanta, Georgia. Best thing happened to me is when they assigned us to contextual education. And I had done jail ministry down in the country, you know, with the guys with the white pants and the black, and the strike down on the side. And they were cutting grass. I'd gone down to the county, to the county jail. And we did Sunday evening church. And we brought them to the Lord every time we went down there. And so I said, I'm done jailman, I, I can do this, you know, Metro State Prison. It doesn't exist anymore, but at the time, Metro State Prison, I said, I can do this. Then I went down there and it was very different than the county jail down in the, in the rural community. It was nine hundred and ninety-eight women, and it was, it was like the movies. And I was assigned every Monday to sit down and have pastoral care with people on my care list. And woman after woman came in my office and they were saying the stuff and talking about how they were in jail for thirty years because their boyfriend killed somebody or because this, or they neglected their children, or, I mean, just story after story and after story. And I remember thinking, Holy Spirit, can you do something about this? And so on Sunday, when we had service, there were women who had never gone to church and they were being slain in the spirit. And they were on the floor cursing and asking what's happening and everything. And then it was like, okay, they don't know how to do church. The Holy Spirit is powerful and it can transform somebody's life in the most desperate situation. So it was then that I started realizing that the Spirit can do something in people's lives that society would have pushed aside and forgotten. And it started to develop more and more and more since then. And this is kind of what led me into my urban ministry call. I started studying missions because I was interested in international missions. And then I reassigned my mission theory to the urban context because that was same kind of needs that are, that one would imagine in developing countries or also here in the United States. So anyway, that's a long way of saying, I think that it's affirming your question, which is, is, as I understood it, is the confusion about the nature of the Holy Spirit a part of the challenge that we experiencing that's bringing these divisions? And I think so. We don't have a broad enough understanding of the Spirit.
Now, you, you said something, and this is gonna take me, take us off subject a little bit, but I, I'm gonna get us back on track. But I, I gotta ask this question. Being raised Pentecostal, we do not put and have not put an emphasis on Christian education, higher learning. It is almost in our community demonized. And when you get higher education, it is almost as if you have divorced your relationship with the Holy Spirit. And yet, some kind of way, being raised almost in the same church setting, but probably in, in, in different areas, you broke away. And you have achieved a great deal academically. And yet, you still are grounded in the, in your Pentecostal roots. How did you, again, escape some of the, the mindset that is injected into those that are raised in Pentecostal settings as it pertains to going to seminary or theology school, or again, obtaining a master's or doctor's degree in that particular way?
Yeah, so two things. One, I think that the anti-intellectualism that has been sort of pervasive historically in the Pentecostal circles has been for a good reason. Because, you know, this higher criticism was sort of the framework by which much of higher education was developed in the early nineteen hundreds, coming out of the, you know, out of the sort of the West. And in many ways, it was so cerebral that it didn't take seriously the lived experience nor the, the, the state of the soul. It was just cerebral. And so this sort of one dimensional approach to education was problematic to faith. But I think that where we, where we missed out is that instead of just shunning the concept of, concept of higher education, we should have seen our experiences as new dimensions to add to education. Because it's, it's educational. With the, you know, what Aristotle called phronesis, for example, lived experience. That's deeply the educational experience on the plantations with African Americans. Lived experience, how in the world did we take a faith that was used to oppress us and we embraced it by lived experience? Everybody talking about heaven ain't going there. You know, and the reason why we can say that, because I know to me, you know, you know, he was good from rocking my cradle to this present time. That lived experience with God shaped our understanding of the divine. That's an educational dimension that Aristotle talked about many years before. But it was not something that was the centerpiece of higher education with the higher criticism coming into the nineteen hundreds. So you can understand that tension between the two. And then, of course, we have this dimension of the Pentecostal community with this spiritual experience. And there were people like William James, for example, or Charles Taylor, who were Harvard professors at the turn of the century nineteen hundreds, who in the psychology, they were looking at variety of religious experiences and the ways in which it shapes us and reforms the human person. Well, who could talk about that more than the Pentecostals? So we, 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 many times, we demonize what we could have contributed to. And I think it's because we don't understand the power that we have in Christ. We can actually help shape theological education.
Wow.
Because, because we have an experience both as people of God, lived experience, and then we have the power of the Holy Spirit that's given us this, this spiritual experience. So, so that's that. And I think that now is a great time for us to really rethink. Because what happens is when you feel wounded, you become insular. You, like something's gonna take something from you, become insular. And nothing can come in and nothing can come out. So I think that now we need to relax. The pendulum is, is, is swinging where we can relax. And, and you don't have to be afraid of your, your spiritual experience as part of the theological discourse in, in many circles.
Wow, thank you, thank you so much for, for, for sharing that. Because how, how important it is for us to encourage our young people, especially for those that aspire to, to go into ministry to, to, to obtain formal education?
Yeah, I really would encourage them to, to do that. Partly because our congregations, early nineteen hundreds, most of the congregations were being filled with people who were coming out of distressed lifestyles. And many would maybe even consider it sort of the working class, who were not, many of them were not formally trained, intelligent for sure, but just not formally trained in terms of higher education. But now congregations are being filled with people who are doctors and lawyers and, and engineers and teachers and other professions. And so what, and they are thinking critically in their workspace. And it's very difficult to engage, to shut off your critical mind when it comes to your faith, when you've been shaped for other careers to think critically. So questions about faith and how does, how do I integrate my faith in my law practice or my medical practice? And we need more clergy who have thought deeply and critically about faith and the integration of faith in everyday life that we can serve the wide range of people that are coming to the church and hungry and, and asking to eat and drink at our, at our feet.
Wow, thank you, thank you so much for saying that. All right, I, I, I want to get back on point here in this particular way. You, you, you once wrote that social justice demands a focus on social problems.
Yes.
And, and that's, that's a deep statement. Why do you think so from a, from, from, from this, from that perspective? Because historically, we have taught that the gospel doesn't address social issues.
And that's, that's, that's interesting. Because when Jesus started his ministry in Luke chapter four, he addressed social issues.
He showed up.
He said, the Lord, he read from Isaiah, the spear of the Lord is upon me, to preach the gospel.
To the poor.
Yeah, but to the poor. And to set at liberty those who were captive and, you know, open the eyes of the blind. Those were social issues. And I don't know why we want to criticize that. I mean, why, why we don't, why we want to spiritualize that in such a way that, oh, we're talking about the poor, the poor, the people who are poor and don't have the Holy Spirit, or people who are blind because they can't see that Jesus is the Messiah. And, oh, these people with blinded eyes, open the eyes of the blind. You know, we can see it all through the gospel. Everything Jesus did was social because social ills impact people. God loves people. And the situations that, that oppress people are concerning to the gospel. Good news, good, the whole concept of good news was social. You know, the sick can be healed. The blind could receive their sight. This is the good news. The good news to a hungry person is here is food. You know, so this idea that you can go and somehow preach to hungry people and never give them food, I mean, it, it, it's kind of doesn't make sense, right?
It makes no sense. And you said something, because whenever, for my experience growing up in church, been, been raised in church all my life, grown, grown, grown up in, in Pentecostal setting, when it wasn't until maybe the early or mid nineties that I heard Luke chapter four, verse eighteen to nineteen, preached from a social perspective, not from a spiritual perspective. And it was stated that the gospel is a message of reform and when, because it has the power to change the economic status of those that hear it and those who put it into practice. But most of our settings don't look at it from a social. But most of our settings don't look at it from a social perspective, they just look at it from a spiritual perspective in that particular way, and so, as you stated, we don't address the practicality that the text reveals, we, we don't even touch it.
Yeah.
I- i- isn't that? Why, 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 why do you think that, 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 that occurs? Especially in, 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 in Pentecostal settings that, that, I mean, we overspiritualize everything, and then, and certain, in other reformations, other, other organizations, they sorta s- sorta look down on us, somewhat laugh at us, because we're not necessarily addressing the issues on a practical level on how people live.
Yeah, um, you know, that's an interesting one, I think that part of it may have had to do with, just sort of pondering as we talk, may have had to do with, um, in the early nineteen hundreds, when Pentecostalism became prominent, there were many social concerns. And yes, there were some, um, Pentecostal pastors who a- addressed those issues, but in a way, the church felt powerless from a social systemic perspective. And even as Pentecostals, we became more and more insular, um, where there were our family members, if they were Baptist or Methodist, uh, they weren't really, um, they didn't have it like the Bible said.
Right, right.
So we were in the world, not of the world, our people are those who do the will of God, so we had to become insular. And the more, and if you're African American already, under Jim Crow, you're a underdog. Now you've made yourself an even smaller group within the underdog group. Um, that, you know, so then you try to, um, make yourself, um, feel better, you know? And so the faith became in that way, a way of empowering people to just make it through the next day and to fight the demons in the world. Uh, and so, uh, it became a very spiritually driven, um, um, idea about the faith. I- i- among some, I mean, there are those, I mean, I think about, um, Lawson, for example, Cool JC. He was very engaged in the social movement of, um, the, you know, he wrote, uh, uh, was it R.C. Lawson who wrote, um, uh, uh, yeah, the, uh, the book about, uh, race or racism, he was combating racism. Anthropology of Jesus, I think he calls it. Um, and then there were folks like Arthur Brazier, for example, who was, um, working toward the latter part of nineteen hundreds. He was working very, um, intensely in Chicago, uh, to try to help with the gang problem and also some of the, uh, housing issues there, so there were those who were working throughout the nineteen hundreds. But as you said, there were these groups that weren't as involved socially, and I think it was because they were trying to, um, try and do the best they can with what they, the power they felt like they had.
Now, most, most, especially in Afro-American circles, most, uh, Afro-Americans that have grown up with the Pentecostal experience don't know, uh, when you look at the history of some of the fathers of Pentecost, uh, they were racist.
Yes.
They were slave owners. Um, h- how? How should we today, because s- some of the, the backdrop of our experience and what e- has even shaped our thinking um, in a lot of ways, uh, deals with racial attention and racial issues? Uh, how does race relations among Christians impact their thinking as it pertains to social justice?
Yeah, um, you know, uh, how does race relation impact their thinking about social justice? I think that that's an issue, okay, so when Pentecostalism, uh, defined in this conversation by Zusa Street Revival, um, first happened in the early nineteen hundreds, uh, it was very integrated and there were, Frank Barterman, a historian, wrote that, um, the color line was washed away in the blood. Um, and also, there were many articles written in the L.A. Times about how black and whites were working together and following over each other, it was very critical, but it was acknowledging that the early Pentecostal expression was very, uh, integrated. And it, in some cases, it leaned more, some historians say more white people following a black leader at one point. Uh, but of course, once they became socially conscious of what was happening spiritually, um, then they started to dividing out, you know, where the whites separated from the blacks and started denominations like the UPC pulled out of A.P.A.W. stuff and, um, and, um, the Sings of God, which was a big one, pulled out of the Church of God in Christ, separated all along racial lines. So that's when society or culture hijacked the mission of the church. And that's what I was addressing earlier, is that it's doing it again through politics. It's hijacking, you know, the church, and this happened many times, we can go all the way back. Think about, um, John Wesley, John Wesley came to the United States of America or the, came to the colonies. He came for the sole purpose of addressing this race issue. He was an abolitionist, and that was in the late seventeen hundreds. Before he died, he wrote to Wilberforce and said, "Do something about this terrible race, um, uh, slave, slavery." And so, b- by the mid eighteen hundreds, um, you had Frederick Douglass, who was a, uh, he was, um, uh, uh, Wesleyan, you know? And he was an abolitionist, and it was the Wesleyans who actually were the ones who were the racists and distanced themselves from him. So the very movement that Wesley started became itself the opposite in less than a hundred years of what he set it out to be. And the same thing happened with the, with the, because culture hijacked the mission of the church. The same thing happened with the Baptists, the Southern Baptists was established to maintain slavery in, in the South, so that's culture hijacked the church, and the same thing happened with the Pentecostals in the nineteen hundreds. And now it's happening again in the two thousands with the political movements, they're, they're hijacking the mission of the church. Well, this has been a history, every century this has happened.
Wow, wow, wow. So then, how, how, how is, how important is, 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 is race relations in order to, uh, because right now, it, it appears as if, like you said, once again, our nation is divided not just politically, but, I mean, p- uh, but also racially, and it's, I mean, the events over the last decade have just caused a, 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 a real swelling. A, a, a serious inflammation that has taken place in our nation that seems to not, i- it has not gone down, even though we have not had a, a, a major issue or situation that has gotten, but, but it's, it's still there.
Yeah, you know, I, I mean, just think about it, we're not even divided so much like we used to based on theology. Baptist, Methodist, Presbyterian, we, that's not even a thing anymore, right? People, you can be Pentecostal and join the Methodist church, you can be Methodist and join the Baptist church, uh, that's not the thing it used to be. Now, the research shows that people are more likely to marry somebody in their political party than there are in their whole faith, in other words, our marriage Muslim.
Wow.
As a Christian, as long as we both have the same political agenda.
That is crazy, wow.
That is crazy, so it's all about the politics now, right? So, um, so it has defined, uh, politics is a new religion. So, that, I think, is the stronghold that we must attack, must dismantle, and we must do it in the name of the Lord and follow the Holy Spirit, because it is driving the race issues, it is driving everything. Uh, you know, and now it's so bad that politicians are running on things that's not true. And people are voting for them cuz they don't check whether it's true or not. It's like, I can't believe some of this stuff, it's like, this is not even true.
Alright, I, I wanna shift a little bit in this particular way. How important then is it for us as the church to become community minded? With the issues that we, we've talked about, some of the things that are going on, we know most of the time, we focus in on this, this, our relationship with God, but we don't put much emphasis on our relationship one with another, as well as even outside of our own community. Jesus tells us very clearly, hey, look, they're gonna know that you, my disciples, by the love you have, one for another. So, h- h- how can we get the church, g- get, get, get our people more community minded?
Yeah, no, that was a exact scripture I was gonna quote, by the way. You said, "Know to my disciples, cuz your love one, one to another," and love has to be, love is not love without action. And, um, the, 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 the immense opportunities that are out there in our community, and I think if COVID taught us anything, COVID, I hope, taught us that the church needs to bear witness outside of the, uh, be more intentional about bearing witness outside of the walls of the church. Uh, there's so many needs, uh, recently, uh, in our city here in North Virginia, we've had an uptick of violence in this, in the case across the country, gun violence. So I reached out to, uh, a guy, I picked up one day, said, uh, "If another one of my friends die by gun violence, I don't even know what I'd do, I have more tears to cry." And then I was, went, I go fishing with a retired surgeon, and he was telling me one day, unrelated to that discussion, he said, "You know, for thirty-eight years, I, I've done a lot of surgeries on gunshot victims, and I vowed that once I retire," and he has, "I want to see how I can help people not go down those bad roads, antipodes." So I put together an evening of hope, where I can pull together families with loved ones who were fatally wounded and remember those folks. I wanted to honor the frontline workers who work tirelessly to try to, you know, save lives. And it was amazing to me, reaching out to families with loved ones fatally wounded, regardless of the situations or um, conditions around the murder of the loved one. Um, they were overwhelmingly receptive and said, "Nobody has reached out to us since our loved one died." And showed kind of kindness, and it occurred to me, there is grief in the community.
Wow.
There are needs in the community, and there's opportunity for the church in the community that we don't even consider. And it's so many places and spaces where we can bear witness and touch people's lives and bear, bring them to the saving grace of Jesus Christ by meeting them at that point of need. And as, uh, as, um, it's been said, people don't wanna know how much you, don't wanna know what you know until they know how much you care. I think there's a, that's volumes, right, that's volumes, speaks volumes to the church's opportunity to bear witness in the public square and to draw people otherwise wouldn't even come to church by letting them know we love them at that point of need.
Wow, that, that right there is so powerful. Um, because it's true, um, I, and I never even thought about it from that perspective, to really consider the grief that people are going through in the community and the way that we as the church can reach out to those individuals and cause just healing to take place, just, just by doing what you did, just small acts of kindness. Um, to, uh, help people overcome some of the tragedy that they have experienced in that particular way. You know, during, the pandemic shifted, uh, so much, uh, and people's involvement, how we function, operate uh, within the body, uh, with how local churches, uh, carry out now ministry. Uh, what are your views on the importance of, of Christians serving today within the local church and in the community? Especially with, you know, the report now, we, you know, we got, we got three big giants of, uh, uh, of, of potential viruses that can, um, you know, that could be fatal in that particular way. That's really causing people to be somewhat, uh, paranoid, fearful.
So you wanna know how, how, what the church can do in light of that?
Yeah, in light of that.
Well, one, uh, you know, that's a tough one, because now, again, um, it, it gets tangled with the political discussions uh, about vaccinations and no vaccinations and all that. But I do think that, um, one of the things we can do is, uh, help people to, well, I'll put it this way, I, I think that there are people, we, I've had to deal with a lot of casualty, well, some casualties, um, less than some pastors have had to deal with, um, to the viruses. But it's just like during the bubonic plague, right, um, in the fifteen hundreds, it lasts a long time, people were dying left and right. During COVID, the heart of COVID, I gained a lot of inspiration from the mystics who wrote during that time. Um, and, uh, some of them were writing about, uh, the need for hope. And I think that one of the things that people are facing now, it feels like there is no hope. And I think the church has within our message, the essence of hope. Sunday, I preached from Lamentation, where it talks about, um, I was homeless, I was in distress, and I was thinking about this every day. And then this came to mind, and then I had hope that sort of grades your faithfulness. So this notion that embedded in our faith is lived hope, our hope is in Christ. So many people are living in hopelessness right now, and we can help them know that our faith offers eternal life that begins now, the quality of life now, but it extends beyond now. So something about that message of hope, I think, is necessary these days in the middle of so much hopelessness.
Do you feel, based upon your experience and, uh, as you've traveled throughout the country, um, that people see the church at, at, at large as being relevant?
No, I don't believe that people believe the church is relevant. Um, and that's part of the fierce urgency of now, when I talk about bear witness in the public square. Um, one of the things that we learned when we reached out to these families is suddenly they realize the church can be relevant. Because otherwise, the church is not relevant to them, we gotta find new ways of expressing the church. And I don't think it means to change your commitment to righteousness and justice, to righteousness and holiness. I don't think you have to somehow, um, massage that, I think, in fact, we should be deeper into that. Uh, but at the same time, we need to express that with love and kindness. The Bible talks about love and kindness of our drawn people. So the idea of being true to who we are, but being, um, present in people's situations is, I think, crucial. And, and this is the same way mission has worked for years, I mean, when you think about un- unreached people group around the world, how do they reach them historically, they go in, they learn the people's language, they learn their culture, they find out what their needs are, they respond to their needs, and then that's how Christianity spread through missions for years, whether it was education, whether it was, um, the need for, you know, primary education or higher education or hospitals, hospitals huge. I just got back from Kenya, for example, and there's a huge need where we were, um, in Limeru for HIV and AIDS, um, support. And the ministries, the Catholic Church and other ministries that have for years been there, um, responded to that need. And that's what we gotta do in our cities today, we gotta see where the needs are and respond to the needs. Uh, and then we become relevant, we become irrelevant because we wanna invite people to see how cool we can be to get people to come to church. It's like, that's not the kind of relevance that we need. Uh, I'm not saying we don't need that, but that's not what's gonna make the church relevant. Um, the re- the church has to move beyond its walls into the community and be relevant to the needs that are in the public square.
Wow, what, what are, what are some of the ways you think that, that the church today can do that? Uh, just, just some of the tangible things?
Okay, so there are some, you're, part of the challenge is, we tend to react, um, when thing, when things are essential, um, um, or romanticized or, uh, or inflamed, sensationalized is the word I'm looking for, sensationalized in the news. Um, say, for instance, issues of, um, homelessness. Um, we need to find ways not to just serve the homeless, but to help them become outward mobile. Um, through job and helping them get jobs, we are doing that, so I know it can work. Um, and then there is the issue of young people who are in distress and looking at research-based, uh, projects such as, um, we know that they, that prison sales are determined, the number of prison sales are determined twenty years from third grade. Because literacy rates in third grade, um, are indicators as to the path that those students are on as it pertains to twenty years later, be in jail, they can't read in third grade, you'll be in jail in twenty years. So they, they know how many prisons they need based on literacy rates in the third grade. And so how cool would it be if we invest more in early education as a church? And how we can, uh, help kids learn to read in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade before they get to the third grade? Because we all react when we talk about over incarceration and things like that. Because we all react when we talk about over incarceration and things like that. Well, it happens before the third grade. So so that's another one. If we can think about economic empowerment, how do we, you know, create economic empowerment or advocate for or create ways in which we can empower entrepreneurs in our community? And there are small ways to do it. I mean, we working with young men who who are in homelessness, getting them into barbering school, which is a little bit of money that we able to raise and get them into barbering school. And today, yesterday, we were talking about, okay, when they graduate, we're gonna get them clippers because we have already set up partnerships to help them get a barbering chair. So we're gonna help them go from homelessness to the barbering chair, you know? So we can do that. Those are the types of things that we can do as the church. And suddenly the church has become relevant. And those are not big investment. They're just intentional investments.
Wow, that is, those are very practical tools and tips for especially because I know they're they're church leaders that are that are watching. Your your organization, the Herbal Renewal Center, does work with reentry. How how can local churches such as the Shepherd's House and others assist individuals who who are coming out of incarceration and trying to get back into society and to gain a sense of purpose in life to not to go back into the prison system?
Yeah, so it's called Pathway Navigators. We work with the Norfolk City Jail. And they have an educational program there and that's not ours. It's another program that they are sponsoring to help people who are gonna be released. They know their release date in six months or something. Get through training, whether it's HVAC or CDL license or some other program with the local community college to help them get the certification that will translate to a job once they get out. All right, so according to research, there are three main reasons. The caveat would be mental health and drug addiction. Now, those, let's bracket those because those are reality as well in many cases. But education, jobs and social engage, social situations are the three reasons why recidivism rates are so high. That's with the exception, again, of drugs and 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 mental health issues. So to help people to become better citizens when they return into community, when they return more responsible citizens, more productive citizens. We need to address the education issue, the jobs issue and the social environment. So the first seventy two hours, once they get out of jail, are the most crucial. Because they determine whether a person goes back. If they don't have a job, if they don't have the proper education for the job, and if they end up going back into the same social environment that they were in the first place, then that's a recipe to go back. So we need to address that. We need to help them get a job, get the education before they get out so they can get the job. But the pathway navigators help with the social piece. So now you have a friend. You have a partnership with a local church that once you get out, we are going to be there for you to encourage you, to help you think about job opportunities, things like that. Because that will help that first seventy two hours. But we need to go in the jail before they get out to build that relationship. So when they come out, that established relationship will already be there. And so those are ways that we are looking at the recidivism issue and the returning citizen issue, helping people to take a different path when they get out.
Thank man, thank you so much. Now, this is my last question I'm gonna ask you and we're gonna we're gonna wrap this up. But with the midterm elections coming up, why is voting today so important?
I think, well, today, I think it's so important because there is a lot of anger and polarization happening. And we need to really take a look at the people who are really trying to bring people together. Because right now, it is, from what I can see, there's a lot of, especially as an African American, what I see on the docket, it it it, some of it would take us back a hundred years, just in terms of ideological framework. In the way people are thinking, they're reacting in ways about things they don't understand, and I don't want to poke and pen their box. But this notion of critical race theory, some of the crazy stuff I've heard about that is just insane. I was like, these people have not read Critical Race Theory. I heard a pastor one day streaming and he was doing an interview and he was like, well, you know, this is demonic and the bubble wall. And I knew the guy. I sent him an email. I said, hey, can you tell, I'm reading this four hundred and ninety five page book on critical race theory. I'm not seeing anything of the kind of what you just said. Can you give me the page number of where you get that from? And he was funny, well, I haven't really read Critical Race Theory. Well, then why are you talking about it? It's like you haven't even read it. I was like, I was scratching my head like, why am I not seeing this stuff he's talking about? We just start saying stuff and it's just crazy. And this notion of somehow, you know, we're gonna, you know, blacks are trying to, anyway, it's just crazy. And and it's it's destructive to our democracy and it's destructive to our community as African Americans, you know? We have got to, we have got to be more aggressive in protecting our community. We've got to be more aggressive in protecting our community, the young minds. Because a lot of what we see in terms of crime is anger in the black community and it's coming from young people who are victims of a system that they haven't even had, they haven't even lived. Kids are twelve years old, talking about one kid commit suicide. Because they are having such a, they've had too much life in such little time. And some of it is family, but some of it is systemic. Yeah, hopefully that's meaningful.
Listen, family, I need y'all to give Dr. Harris a big round of applause. I need it in the comments. Man, what an awesome night. Oh, my goodness. My God. Dr. Harris, you dropped so many nuggets here tonight. It's not even funny. You have literally, literally opened our minds, our hearts and our spirits and shifted our thinking in such a most profound way that we truly can be the hands and the feet, the mouth of Jesus in a practical way and touching and changing the lives of our community. I want to thank you so much. I am so honored to have you on tonight. And listen, this will not be the last time you will be with us. I'm I'm gonna look forward to try to set something up, to bring you in person because I appreciate your heart, your spirit. And I thank God for you and I wish nothing but the best for for you and your ministry and all that God has put into your care. God bless you, man of God.
Thank you so much, Pastor Matthews. It's an honor. I really appreciate it.
Well, family, listen, we again are just grateful to the Lord for all that he has done. We're going to again close out our Wednesday night Word Boost. Man, if you know of anybody that needs to again reflect and ponder to help some of our friends who may not be church or outside of our community that needs to hear tonight's discussion, I want to challenge you to send this to them. Go on and share this and send it to them because, man, we 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 got some real nuggets, some practical things that we as the church can do. If you know some people that once was in church, I think tonight session can can ignite a fire within our heart to to return back to the Lord again in such a powerful way. And again, I want to thank Dr. Harris, I want to thank our social justice team for putting this on. Listen, the midterm elections is coming up November the eighth. Make sure that you have your plan, your strategy on what you're going to do, whether you're gonna mail it in, whether you're gonna go in person. Please have your strategy laid out. Know the issues, know the issues. Know who's running for all of these areas. Do your homework, do your research. So when you go in, you are voting underneath of the auspices of you and the Holy Ghost, the Spirit of God. Listen, join us this coming Sunday. Again, we have two services this Sunday at nine is our friends and family. If you know someone that needs a touch from the Lord, make sure that you bring them with you into the house of God or have them to tune in and watch us this coming Sunday. And then at four o'clock, we're going to have our licensing and ordination service as we see God move in the lives of fifty eight of our members in such a most powerful way as they consecrate and separate themselves for use in the kingdom of God. And we are so grateful to the Lord for what God is doing in the lives of our our members. We're getting geared up for our December to Remember as well. The whole month of December, we're just gonna ponder and reflect upon God's goodness and faithfulness towards us. We're bringing in some, I mean, a ray of special guests that's just gonna be a blessing. And then I'm gonna tell you this right now, you do not want to miss New Year's Day. We're gonna have a wonderful, wonderful time. I'm announcing right now, we're not doing New Year's Eve. We're gonna do New Year's Day. We're not gonna do New Year's Eve. We're gonna do New Year's Day. We're gonna have one service that's Sunday morning, but it's gonna be off the chain. I will give you more detail about all that is again gonna take place in that service and it's just gonna be wonderful. Again, for all of our married couples, join us for the Marriage Retreat, December the first through the third, December the first through the third. We got some special guests that's gonna be joining us. Please make sure that you turn in your stop paying or pay it off. For those of you that haven't, make sure that you see Minister Tawana and Minister Marb on this coming Sunday as well for those. I believe that is all. But I want to say to someone that may be watching, if you have not made Jesus Christ your Lord and Savior, if you are in a backslidden state, I believe tonight, as we have heard Dr. Harris, like the two men on the road to Emmaus, their hearts burn. I believe tonight that through the prophet of God that he used tonight, your heart has started burning once again. And if you have not made Jesus Christ your Lord and Savior, I want you to know he is a personal God that walks with us every single day. And he wants to walk with you. If you've been in church and you've found yourself drifted away, I want you to know this is a call. As Jesus turned those two men around, he's turning you around right now. I want you to pray this prayer with me. Say, dear Lord Jesus, I come to you right now and I give you my heart. I give you my life. I surrender to you. Lord Jesus, I make you the captain of my soul. I open up the door of my heart and I ask the Holy Spirit to come in, that he might lead me and guide me in all truth. I thank you that from this moment forward, I am saved because I believe with all my heart that Jesus Christ died on the cross and rose again for my eternal life. And I thank you for it right now. If you prayed that prayer, I want you to do me a favor. Let me declare to you that you are in the family of God. That is so powerful that you know that you are in the family of God. I'm not talking about a church membership. I'm talking about you are in the family of God. And that is so powerful and such a a need for us to understand that now you are one of God's children. Let us help you grow in your faith, in your development, in your walk relationship with the Lord. Will you pull out your cell phone and will you text salvation eight or connect eight to seven nine seven nine seven nine? You do it right now and I'm telling you, one of our ministers or deacons will get in contact with you and will help you with this new journey as you develop and build your walk relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ. Again, take your cell phone out, text salvation eight or membership eight to seven nine seven nine seven nine and we'll get in contact with you. Church family, God bless you. To all of you that have tuned in tonight, God bless you. We thank God for you. We love you and we'll see you this coming Sunday at the Shepherd's House.